Pledge to the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. First on our agenda this evening is council's intention to adopt an ordinance amending chapter thirty zoning of Christiansburg Town Code in regards to sidewalk requirements in the B one limited business and B three general business districts. This is a public hearing, is anyone here that wishes to speak to this intention? Mr. Helms, do you need to clarify that any further?
Basically, this will allow, in certain instances, uh, to substitute a paved multi-use trail and Lewis sidewalks in the, in the B one and B three districts. Prime example would be out on Cambria Street where we've got a trail all the way, we'll have a trail from Providence Boulevard all the way to the rec center. Our current ordinance would require all the business lots down there to build a sidewalk right beside the trail. And, uh, that, or, uh, put a sidewalk in and we build a trail behind it if we want to connect our trails. So this would allow us, in certain instances, to allow, put the trail in instead of sidewalk.
Okay, council, you have any questions of Mr. Helms?
Maybe just a couple, just for clarification. The, uh, and in speaking with Nicole as well, this is to make it, I guess, planning commission looked at this to make it more uniform on the, with the trail use? Or is that because you have, Nicole was saying sidewalk trails, sidewalk trails, what you can end up with?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
If we say we'd already put the trail in.
Right.
Well, actually, we'd put the trail in, the developer would still have to put a sidewalk in right beside her.
Right.
And that really doesn't make-
When you say we, you mean the town, it's to the trail, right?
Yeah. Like out Cambria Street, now we have it there in front of that lot, right behind the aquatics, are you right behind the recreation center? It's a business lot.
Right.
Our current code, if they developed as business, they'd have to build a sidewalk right beside the trail or, and we have, it's not a variance.
Is the option for you, for them to just don't put money into the sidewalk fund still there, or is that-
That, that's for cases where it doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk because of terrain usually.
That's the unreasonable circumstances required.
But they still contribute something to the fund, correct?
Yes, yes, this doesn't really address that part, this is just for if the trail, makes more sense to put the trail in because it connects two of our trails, or if the trail's already there, they shouldn't have to put a sidewalk in right next to us. This is the logic behind this.
Okay, with that clarification, is there anyone now that would like to speak to this intention to adopt an ordinance with regard to the sidewalks?
I do have one more question for Barry though about the-
Okay, go ahead.
The, irregardless then of the, um, trail or the sidewalk that's being used or actually that's being constructed, the town covers the maintenance aspects of that, correct?
Once it's installed.
Once it's installed, what's the-
If it's in an easement and, uh, or in the right of way.
What's the, what's the cost barriers between a hundred-foot sidewalk and a hundred-foot trail? Any idea?
Couldn't tell you.
Or by foot, is that-
This is requiring a ten-foot wide trail.
Right.
And sidewalks five feet wide.
Right.
It'd probably be close to the same, but I can't, I wouldn't, also depends if you have curb gutter or not.
It's about twice, yeah.
Another reason I bring that up is a lot of like developments, community developments in the, uh, new residential areas, some of them have the trails. And the trails are, um, I guess that would be homeowners would be taking care, that wouldn't be the business obviously. And they're kind of suspect the way they're kept up, but we as a town would be the ones monitoring and maintaining those trails.
Yes, if they're, if they're in the right of way or on, on a, or in an easement.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this intention to adopt the ordinance? If not, we'll close this public hearing. Our next public hearing is council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to a rezoning request by the Royal Order of Moose Incorporated for property located at one fifteen Farmview Road Northwest, and this is tax parcels four sixty-six dash one dash sixty A through sixty-four A and four thirty-six dash two or sixty-five A through sixty-seven A from industrial two, that's general industrial, to B three general business. The property is scheduled as commercial in the future land use map of the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this request for the adoption of the ordinance or the rezoning? Mr. Neal?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, my name is John Neal, I'm an engineer with Gayne Neal Incorporated here in Christiansburg. I'm here tonight representing the Royal Order of Moose Lodge for the property of Farmview Road. I've handed you a little drawing out to show you kind of the property that we're talking about. Uh, that runs on Farmview Road and behind the target. It's approximately nine acre of property. We're requesting that this be rezoned from I two to B three. Right now, there's a section of this property that's zoned I two and I think we, historically, this was zoned I two because of the connection to Morgan Southern Railroad. But as this property, and all of this property is developed, uh, this is much more suited, uh, we think its highest investment use is B three, uh, general business. Uh, and we did offer after working with the planning commission, uh, through the initial work session and public hearing, uh, and then when they took action on it, we'd submitted three proppers which you have in the packet. I'll be happy to go over those with you, but they mostly dealt with access and with the buffer to the existing local home park. Um, we talked about trying to accommodate the local home park as it exists today with a buffer yard. Uh, should this property develop as a business, to protect the residents of the local home park from any kind of noise and things like that, but also allow for if the local home park was redeveloped as something in business that they could potentially cohabitate and, and provide cross-connection to those two properties. Uh, we felt like we had some good property, you had those in your packet. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have, uh, but we do have one request. Uh, if you see fit to, uh, approve this, we would request that you possibly vote on this tonight. Uh, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. Uh, we have had no one speaking in opposition and actually have had no one attend any of the meetings so far other than ourselves. Uh, and with the way the calendar falls, it would be a three-week, uh, wait until you vote at the next meeting. So if there are no objections, we would request respectfully that you vote on this tonight.
Mr. Neal, could you read those proppers?
And I apologize, the one I have, go on, mine may be slightly out of date here, I want to make sure we do make some minor changes and I will make sure that-
There's the words in the packets, yeah.
I want to make sure that I have the exact right wording. A twenty-foot buffer yard will be provided along the eastern boundary of the mobile home park with the adjacent mobile home park as long as the mobile home park exists. Commercial development of the mobile home park would void the twenty-foot buffer yard. If, this is property number two now, if at the time of development of the property, the existing vegetative screen on the mobile home park is still in place, no additional plannings will be required. However, if the existing screening has been removed, the developer shall plant white pines with a two-inch minimum caliper at twenty-foot center-to-center spacing. Number three, access to the parcel will not be from the adjacent private mobile home park road as long as the adjacent property is mobile home park use. Should the mobile home park ever be redeveloped, cross-access may be provided via a public street connection to the mobile home park property provided the subject property, subject parcel has not been fully developed. So what we're saying is if, if the, if the mobile home park was redeveloped as commercial, we could provide cross-access for some larger plan of development. Uh, however, if the Moose Lodge property was developed as a business, they would not be required to come back and provide cross-access uh, if the mobile home park was developed after this property was developed.
Is there a reason to pick white pines?
Just from a, a standard buffer and that's generally what's planned there now.
Okay. You bet nobody contacted you in opposition about this at all?
Yes, sir, we had none.
We had one letter, we had one letter saying from the trailer park owner, he had no objections to designing the request.
Thank you for reading this, Mr. Helms.
Yes, sir.
And just for what it's worth, uh, Mr. Helms, the property that's lies to the west of that, that little corner lot here, number one, do you remember the size of that by any chance? That's all one's parcel, correct?
Yes, it's close to between, around nine acres also, it's about the same size as a-
And it's currently zoned the same, of course, as what's currently the Moose Lodge is zoned, correct?
No, it's business, it's general business, B three.
And a portion of the mobile home park is zoned I two and a portion of it's zoned B three, I think, correct, Nicole? And one of the concerns about access and one of the reasons we wrote the proppers, they were, they are, the way they are written, is that the mobile home park has an access drive that's called riding or extension, but it is a private access drive and it borders, uh, the Moose Lodge property. So there's a, a row of buffering trees and then there's the riding or extension access drive and then there's the first row of mobile homes.
Any questions of Mr. Neal?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you all for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this request?
Um, let me say one or two things. Um, I'm the realtor for Walter Potter and Walter-
Please state your name.
My name is Clint Abbey, I'm a Caldwell Banker Townside Realtor. And, uh, I'm representing Walter Potter in this transaction. He, uh, pulled his back lifting some things out of a, a trunk of his car and would have been here otherwise.
Who is Walter Potter?
Walter Potter is the buyer in this situation.
Okay, thank you.
And he's the one who's started this, uh, action to try to get this changed over.
Sorry, I'm running.
He just wanted to apologize for not being here, but he's just completely frozen up. So I, I wanted to be, if anyone had any questions of him, uh, otherwise, I just wanted to give you some apologies.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this request? If not, we'll close this public hearing and call Christiansburg Town Council.
Mr. Mayor, if we can, you're going to sit down a little bit.
I'd like to go ahead and let council review this request Mr. Neal had just addressed during tonight's session. I'll make a motion, we put that on give agenda.
I was getting to that soon as we opened. We gotta open the meeting first. Christiansburg Town Council is now in session, you have a copy of the minutes before you. You've had an opportunity to look over the minutes, are there any additions or corrections?
Immediately approved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve, second discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, now, we need a motion to amend the agenda if it is your desire to-
I so moved.
You're moving to put that on the agenda to, uh, discuss and vote on the, uh, proposal for the rezoning.
I'll send that request, Mr. Mayor.
And second, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that will be item number three under discussion by council members. We have with us this evening a young lady that, uh, we've come to know in the last couple of months, our tourism director, Ms. Lisa Flickley, and Ms. Lisa, if you'll come forward and tell us what you've got planned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's been a few months since I've been here in this spot introducing myself to you for the first time. And I'm glad to be back tonight, uh, to share some progress with you from, from the Montgomery Regional Tourism Office. I have, before you, you will see handouts of our, the draft of our tourism plan and also I put together a highlights sheet for you with some timelines there, uh, for your either reading. This strategic plan, I call it more of a where shall we begin plan, it's more of a work plan, um, and, um, I encourage you to ask questions of either me or Randall Rose is with us tonight, he is from the State Tourism Office. And Randy helped us through, um, our, by facilitating the strategic planning process. I'd like to go to the highlights page and just walk you through how that process unfolded. December the eighteenth, we had our first work session, it was a half-a-day session facilitated by Randy and we had approximately sixty to seventy folks who were there with us. And in the plan, you'll see a list of those individuals and organizations that they're affiliated with. But it was people from across the business community, residential, uh, government, nonprofit, just a whole host of folks in which we have sat in this room tonight that really got in there and helped us start scratching the surface on, you know, who we are, where we want to be, and all those sorts of things. Uh, January the twenty-fourth, we had the second half, uh, day work session. And then March the nineteenth, we reconvened to draft, uh, or to review the draft. And we broke out into groups, had some discussion to make sure that we had included everything that we needed to include in the plan to make some revisions and so forth, and that took us a couple of hours that day. That brings us to this evening, April the sixteenth. This morning, I gave a presentation, much like I'm doing tonight, to the Blacksburg Town Council and then, uh, to you folks tonight, and then April the twenty-second, I'll be presenting to the Board of Supervisors. May the seventeenth is our anticipated, uh, adoption of the plan, that would be the, the Tourism Operating Board would then formally adopt this plan. Hopefully, that would give enough time for you folks to read over the plan and to give any suggestions, recommendations, or just to make sure that we have everything as, as we all want it to be. The targeted date for the first phase of the completion of all our marketing is September the first of this year. That's a little aggressive considering everything we have to do, but at that point, I'll be coming up on a year of employment. And so it's pretty important to me that, uh, the bulk of what we need to have in place is in place by then. So what I'd like to do is just quickly familiarize you with the plan. You will see that I neglected to put page numbers in here, but I'll make sure to correct that for the final one. But we do have a table of contents and we have included an overview and our mission statement, vision statement, and we have five goals for our program, uh, with this three-year strategic plan. Again, we have the team listed in here, the background, and we thought that this was important to put, um, the background of things that have been done in both towns and the county over the last few decades. Because quite frankly, there's been important, um, important actions taken and a lot of relevancy still here. So we thought that that was important to include in the plan. Then we got into the situational analysis, and that was pretty much an academic exercise designed to help us uncover things that we intuitively know, but we wanted to get out there for, for all ears to hear. And so we went through what's called a SWAP analysis, and that's where we look at our strengths, our weaknesses, some people like to call them challenges, uh, opportunities and threats. And then we moved on to what are our assets? And so in this plan, you'll find a table that looks much like this with a lot of dots on it. And what we've attempted to illustrate here is to take the assets that were listed and denote where they may be valuable with certain markets of tourism. And this is not by any means an exhaustive list, uh, there may be many more markets, but these are the, the, um, the predominant ones that surfaced during our, uh, planning session. And then we move on to, um, a snapshot of our infrastructure, and that is what dining establishments and lodging and shopping we have here that all travelers need. And this is a good time for me to mention that this is a living document. Um, I have made most of the edits, there's still some that need to be made here and then whatever comes out of the presentations to the two councils and the Board of Supervisors. But I will be using this plan, it won't be sitting on a shelf, and so there'll be updates and, and tweaks here and there as we need them. And then we drilled down a little further into the tourism infrastructure and we looked at things, specific things like signage and, um, uh, agritourism and if we need any land preservation efforts to be made there. And one example would be if we targeted young families, just to say, families with young kids, we, our facilities may need to be increased, facilities such as children's museums or teen centers or those types of attractions that families seem to migrate towards. So we looked at those types of things. Then we moved on to the, um, customer service piece of this. And what we meant by this is we, we are a destination made of two towns and a county and lots of establishments that service our travelers as well as our residents. And we like to be on the same page as far as the businesses take care of their own customer service training, but we know that a lot of the frontline employees are transient students, and so they come and go and it's, uh, it's pretty much a burden to put on a business to make sure that their frontline employees are well-buried in, um, matters of our, of our destination. So we're going to be looking at tools to put in the hands of those business owners to be able to sing off the same sheet of music, if you will. And then we get into the meat of the plan, and that is our goals, measures, targets, objectives. And with that, I would like to take us back to the timeline, to the highlights page. At the bottom of the page, I have put, it's under a plan of action, and you'll see that there's quite a few tasks here under 2013. And then they get to be a little fewer as we go to 2014 and 2015. That's because in 2014 and 15, not because it's going to be s- smooth sailing, but the tasks become a little bit more complex, so, um, and then in 2013, we should have most of those foundational pieces in place. There are five bullets down at the bottom below that table, and my reason for noting this here is just to say that these are supportive tasks that, um, that will help support the, the, the tasks that are noted in the table. And they are ongoing now, a lot of those are ongoing, so just to let you know that, um, there's work to be done in and among these actions. And then lastly, I would like to say that we are involved in a number of regional initiatives, and that's the second, uh, stack of literature I put there for you. There's brochures from the Crooked Road, Round the Mountain Artisan Trail, which are both two, two, uh, legs of the Friends of Southwest Virginia, um, initiative that we both invest in annually and then invest in by, by working on, uh, committees and so forth. And then Fish Virginia First and, uh, the New River Initiative are another couple of, uh, regional initiatives that we are, um, participating in. And then we have some grants that are in the works as well. We are participating on a multi-jurisdictional, um, agritourism grant. Now, one has been filed and then we have another application that we hope to be in soon. So we've got a lot going on, we're pretty proud of our program, I'm so pleased with the cooperation from the community at large and from our elected leaders and nonprofits, I just can't say enough about the community here and how excited I am to be a part of it. So I would take any questions now or later.
All right, let's do it now, any questions for Lisa?
I'll make a comment, we have one of our more conservative council members on your team and he's a big fan and, uh, we can, we can tell just from the presentations and, and, uh, from what we hear throughout the week, we're really glad you're here and it seems to me you have a really good thing going, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for taking time to come and update us, uh, as well.
Pleased to do it and I'll come back anytime you have me.
I, I can't take any credit, I mean, Lisa's done a great job, Mr. Rose facilitating it, uh, put, I mean, was taking it step-by-step through the process. You get, you see on, um, it's not numbered, but I think it's page three or four, the number of participants, and that, that's a huge number of people. Also want to thank, we have four or five people here, Barry, uh, Terry, Nicole, Randy and Val, were you a part of that? We have four people here, took time out of their day to go up there and be part of this, so the town gets fair representation. And I do appreciate, I just don't see my name on page three under the Montgomery County Tourism Development Council.
Oh, you're serious.
Did the mayor take me off that?
No.
We'll make sure to correct that.
That's okay, but it, it has been, um, it's been, um, interesting and it's a case of experience, I think we will benefit from it.
We had input from Randy Wingfield who's present as well, didn't we, and Brad Everly was present there as-
Right, Mr. Hubbard, we had large, large contingent.
He always had told us that we had extremely good representation at this meeting.
At every, at every meeting, I believe.
I know, I know we do, but Henry has been keeping us posted on council.
I agree.
And has been, you know, it's been really encouraging, and that's why I noted him, I know we have good representation, but he's been bringing back very favorable reports.
While we were waiting for you to arrive a year ago, Lisa, Councilman Joe Walter has more or less assumed the responsibility for promoting our own area here.
Yes.
And has worked diligently, so if you need to work him, well, he's used to it, go ahead and work him.
Well, the brochures that I, that were in my office when I came aboard have been very, very helpful. And they're flying off, in case you don't know, we have a, a new brochure desk, it's new to, to us, but the Chamber of Commerce donated it and it's a great, great literature, yes, it would fit in a new place, so lucky for us. But, uh, we're carrying that literature and hope to have more to, to add to it later on this year, so. And if you did get out to, uh, Terry's, uh, place over there at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center to see the new love works, do so, it's an awesome, uh, creative piece out there that Allison Long's father actually created, I think, so.
All right, any other questions for Lisa? Thank you so much for being here, we look forward to you coming back at, uh, sometime in the future and sort of give us an update.
We will, hopefully, if you will.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Turner.
Connie, Connie Turner from the Allen Dene Street, I'm not coming about my street tonight. Number one, for myself, I want to say how nice I think the park looks there on Ellet Drive. Uh, I think that's, that's going to be a good addition, uh, to the neighborhood there. I come before you tonight to once again thank the town and the council for their support for the Christiansburg Alumni Return Event. This is our fifth year and it will be held on August the tenth, 2013, from seven to ten at the rec center. Cost is still a bargain, it's only ten dollars. Look for our signs that will be announcing the event, and this year, we will be doing a silent auction to raise money for the scholarship fund, so bring some extra money when you come. And also, we'll still have some T-shirts and hats for sale. Last night at our meeting, we voted for our three honored guests. And so you're hearing it first before it gets put out on Facebook or anything. They will be Wilma Snuffer, a little embarrassing, but myself, and our own mayor, Richard Ballagey. And we hope that you all will come out to support this event so that we can continue to do it each year. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Connie.
We wanted to do this as a surprise.
I'm honored, thank you so much. That will be August tenth, it has proven to be an outstanding event every year. It's very well attended and I look forward to being with you on August tenth, Connie.
And you will be hearing more for your part later.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? If not, then we'll close the-
Okay, nobody ate from Adam on the railroad thing?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I saw Adam hiding back there. Adam, tell us about the railroad crossing.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council, um, about a year and a half ago, uh, we-
About a year and a half ago, we spoke about railroad, Crisman Mill and Cambria, and I'm back to give you an update. So, a quick background, several years ago, there were quite a few improvements that were done to the Cambria Street Crossing, also known as supplementary safety measures according to the railroad. This made the Cambria Crossing much better with general safety improvements, but it was also in hopes of obtaining a lower score or risk index to the crossing. Currently, this crossing has a quiet zone applied to it, that is pre-rule or grandfather due to rule in 1996, any crossing that currently had a whistle band or a quiet zone applied, just carried forward. So this crossing currently has a whistle band in effect, and you can see these were the improvements that we made. Channelization devices, medians, which prevents vehicles from crossing lanes and going around gates. However, the Crisman Mill Crossing is considered to have a very high risk index and does not qualify for a quiet zone in itself. And so I'll go up, just so you can maybe get a little bit of a visual of it. There we go. Not quite as pretty of a picture, but it at least gives you a general overview where this is Crisman Mill, this is Christiansburg side, this is county side and then the crossing. So, like I said, this has a high risk index and does not qualify for a quiet zone. The town had originally hoped to apply for a combined crossing quiet zone, and this is where you average multiple crossings, their score together in hopes of obtaining a low enough score that a quiet zone could be applied to both. But even after the significant improvements were made at Cambria Crossing to lower the score, the average score still did not meet the required risk index to apply for that combined quiet zone. In addition to doing that, it would also open the door for the railroad to potentially remove the existing quiet zone that is at Cambria Street. So we felt it was not worth even trying to apply for it, since based on initial calculations and working with our engineers, it wouldn't qualify anyway. So, I think it was maybe a couple council meetings ago, we were recently asked to investigate the option of adding medians or channelizing devices to the Crisman Mill Crossing, similar to what you saw down at Cambria. While medians would normally be a relatively inexpensive option to lower the risk index, due to the road alignment, they would not be able to be installed to the specifications set out by the railroad. And they would not be considered a supplementary safety measure, which would thus lower the score. So unfortunately, I'm back to tell you that the problem remains the same, is that anything short of realigning the road out at Crisman Mill and installing, in addition to installing these supplementary safety measures, the town would not be able to lower the risk index enough at that crossing to apply for a quiet zone.
And what other supplemental safety measures were looked at aside from just the barriers and the medians?
That four gate crossing, I'm not sure if that's what you meant by a barrier. Other than that, the railroad doesn't really identify a whole lot of other supplementary safety measures that would lower the risk that great. These, those channelization devices, that is one, and then gates, and there's a variety of gates, you're, like you're, so down at Cambria, you have your two gate crossing. And the reason you could get away with those is with these medians, it prevents a car from trying to drive around that gate. A four gate crossing is certainly a possible option, but those are significantly much more expensive.
When you say a, you know, four gate crossing, I mean, is that one where it's gonna go all the way across both lanes, as I was talking about?
No, that is actually four, four independent gates. What typically happens is that the two gates and the, I guess on the driving side would close first, and that way if there was anybody stuck in between, they would still have time to pass, and then the second gates on each side would close.
And what is the cost of installation of a four?
The railroad estimates somewhere around a hundred to $200,000. Now, that's saying that the railroad would even do it considering the road alignment at a Crisman Mill. I don't even know if we would be able to fit a four gate crossing out there due to the, basically, once you get out to the crossing, this pretty much goes down to a single lane of traffic. So, right now, you have a gate which, I guess from what we can find, still does not meet spec because the railroad typically likes to have gates that close parallel to the crossing. But in this case, it was installed that basically closes perpendicular to the crossing, just because of the poor road alignment.
I do know from my experience that driver expectancy is very, very important, and to channelize that, you would pretty much disallow any truck traffic from making that movement around there. And this is a reminder of, first of all, excellent update, and thank you for the timely, timely update on that, but from an operations standpoint for the road itself, that is, that's a terrible skew angle, and driver expectancy, even if you were to put the gates back, it's the railroad would not like, it would be very confusing to drivers and you have a high potential for them to not understand what's going on, they're used to stopping at a railroad crossing.
Right.
So I think so.
Adam, simply by adding the four gate crossing, that doesn't ensure that it will qualify enough to be a safety increase, is that correct?
Correct, and from what I understand, we won't even be installing the cross or the gates, it will actually be the railroad. So, they may not even do it, like I said.
We put the cost, correct? They install, right?
Yes.
What, the index right now, I mean, just from a layperson's perspective on this, you're, you're, I guess it's the danger index, for lack of a better term, is it a zero to 10, is it a zero to 100? What, how is that listed? Or is it an ABC?
I'm not sure what the maximum threshold is, but it is currently set at 51,000 if the horn were not to blow.
Okay.
So, since the horn is, or the train is currently blowing its horn, it brings it down to about 31,000. By installing, and that's what's kind of difficult about some of these numbers that I have, is this is a very simple calculator that the railroad provides that tells you a four gate crossing is worth this much.
By point of reference, what does the Cambria Crossing list at?
Oh, the Cambria Crossing?
And if you would mind, if you have the number for the pre and post improvements with the medians?
Sure, Cambria is currently listed at 29,000.
And that's, that's the current?
That's the current.
And it was, it was, it was of course silent beforehand, what was it listed beforehand for the medians? Do you know?
That I don't know.
That was installed within the last, what, three years?
I have pictures from 2009 and it included those.
Four years, okay.
However, from what I understand is even right now, if something were to happen at Cambria, it is likely that our quiet zone would not be renewed. Even with the significant improvements, there are other factors in play.
You say something happened, you mean if there was an unfortunate circumstance, right?
If there was an accident, or we tried this combined quiet zone. There's a few other variables in there that would cause it to exceed that current threshold, so that's kind of why we don't really wanna touch anything down at Cambria, because even in itself, we don't feel that it would meet the threshold to make it a quiet zone.
But that's if we move to have the town be a quiet zone, correct?
Correct.
If we move to just spot like we have right now through Cambria and we just kept the spotlight on Crisman Mill, what do we need to be at to, in good faith, even apply for the possibility of being labeled as a quiet zone?
The threshold to get down to is somewhere, it looks like it is about 13,000, and like I said, Rod, these numbers may be kind of arbitrary.
Sure.
Because while using this online calculator, it doesn't take into account the road alignment and things like that. So if we were to go ahead and let's, for argument's sake, let's say we could install those supplementary safety measures such as the channelization device, that would lower our score enough to be able to try to apply for one. However, these channelization devices have a certain specification that they need to be installed, meaning they need to be installed so close or so far away from the gate, from the railroad. And if we were to go ahead and install them, well, one, we couldn't install them on a curve because it starts to narrow too far and we simply don't have enough room. We would actually need to move them probably to a point that's much straighter up on the road to, and at that point, it would actually remove them from this area to be considered a supplementary safety measure.
And for the sake of not asking too many questions, how close of Mr. Carpenter or Mr. Helms is the Crisman Mill Crossing to the county line?
That's right. Basically the picture.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, we're that close. And so obviously, any quiet zone that we would facilitate would certainly benefit the county tremendously.
Right, but one thing to keep in mind is, right now, I've been talking about channelization devices on this side.
Right.
They would also need to go on this side.
That's right.
So.
Has there been open dialogue about this?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think so.
I mean, because then it would have to work in conjunction, right?
You're gonna have to get rid of the line and some roads and everything else.
This all be judged in Atlanta, that's where Norfolk Southern looks at all their engineering and things, and the further you pull those gates back, the larger of a trap zone you have for cars. You can just imagine pulling those gates back off of where people can see their trouble, like around about, you will be able to see everything that's going on. But the further you pull those gates back, the broader the trap zone is, and you can imagine a driver hearing noises and seeing lights and gates closing and getting past one, not being able to see where they're supposed to go, it can be very.
Because right now, there's, and it's been a long time since I've been there, there's virtually nothing, correct?
There are gates.
There are, I mean, as far as any warning is, aside from just the gate, is there, is there a pre, like, you know, 500 yards up the road, is there any kind of marker, any lights, any flashing zones, anything like that?
I think I got another one.
Okay, that's a good point.
So, actually, another very small supplementary safety measure are these little signs that say multiple tracks and stuff like that, so that gets factored into.
But there's nothing else aside from that gate?
I can tell you from traveling that road.
I don't think so.
Nothing.
It's just right at the track.
I think there's an orange sign that says railroad ahead. You don't think there is?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but certainly nothing that would cause a decrease in score to.
Right, but regardless though, the county's gonna have to be on board with this, correct? So, when we have individuals come before the town and asking us what we can do to facilitate it, we can do one half the equation at the very best regardless if we were looking at.
Correct, or maybe even a third, because then there's a railroad in play as well.
And that's where, I think Mr., I think Mr. Stipes and myself, Mr. Sherwood, last time we kept thinking about this $20,000, that's where it came from originally a couple years ago. That's that number because it took in, in fact, everything.
Well, and realignment of the road and that sort of thing, and that's, that was a very, that was a ballpark.
I believe the figures presented to us by Citizen the last couple weeks was five or $6,000, something like that, or give or take, for medians, for me?
Yes, for channelization devices, I think our costation was like $13,000 or so, which is why I said relatively, they are a relatively inexpensive option to lower your score. Unfortunately, due to, still due to the road alignment, we can't install them, or if we did, they wouldn't count towards our score.
And last question, do we have a plan going forward, a five-year plan for trying to get that as a quiet zone, or anything?
Nothing I'm aware of.
My concern would be, it all depends on the railroad. We can have any plan we want, and their regulations can change on an annual basis, unless you have their sign on for a five or 10 year, guaranteed that if you do these certain things with this cost, have communication with the county, but, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, Barry, Adam, and Randy, I mean, that's very unlikely for the railroad to commit to that. Is it?
Their right of way and property interest supersede VDOTs, they supersede the town of Christiansburg, they supersede everybody, they do, quite honestly. And I would venture to say that what you need to do to correct this would be in the neighborhood of half a million, because you'd have about $250,000 in road costs plus whatever your gate costs are gonna be. That would be a fix that I think Norfolk Southern would be happy to look at, you know, to talk about, but it'd have to be in combination with the road realignment. So you're probably looking at a half million dollar fix there, between the cost of, or the extortion fee of the gates, which you pay Norfolk Southern, which is, and then the cost of realigning the roads, those projects. Anyway, that's what I would say.
Did you say for both sides or just not?
I'm saying for the, for the, for a fix that Norfolk Southern would, I think that they would be, work with us on, would be a combination of new gates and road realignment to line everything up, basically swing Crisman Mill Railroad out, and that doesn't include the property costs, if you give an easement to do it, but bring the road out and have it cross to where the crossing is all visible, tidy it out from a functional standpoint. The road cost is probably quarter of, about $250,000 for that.
And that was, if I remember, that was studied when the town was, gosh, six, seven years ago, when the town redid Crisman Mill, and this is certainly an improvement from what it used to look like, you know, maybe seven or eight years ago now. But at the time, I don't think we were able to acquire that additional right of way.
It has been close to 15 years since this was brought to our attention by residents out in that area, particularly.
Dr. John Casali was one resident out there.
Yeah, it was windmill heels in that area, and their concern was so much, not so much daytime horn blowing, but in the evening. And the railroad has been there for years, I don't ever remember that the railroad wasn't there. And I'm sure that when they built those houses out there, the railroad was in sight. And I don't know, I think back in my days when I built a house in Huff Acres, which is beside the interstate, I guess maybe it dipped a dawn on me that the interstate was gonna create noise, but it did, but we got used to it. Evidently, these folks can get used to that train whistle blowing late in the evening, and I know that the railroad came, we had folks that talked to us about it, they explained the situation, and I thought it had sort of died until it was brought up again, that it wanted a quiet zone. It'd be nice.
I don't know what you can do about it, I do know that those are town residents to the left of the track as you look at it, and they're right behind those trees, they're right there at this one. There are no county residents till you get up on top of the hill up there, so they're several hundred yards.
There's one there, that one big white house, somebody lives in there, I think.
There were, but they might have moved out. The windows are wired up. I think it's just hay there now.
Just across the road there is where the golf course ends there, property, so there aren't any houses until you get up to top of the hill.
And I do support a quiet zone, but not at the cost of safety.
And not at the cost of, but if that's an option.
Well, but that's on the table for discussion. I mean, that would be, that would, that would meet everyone's needs and would be, but it, you know, does come at a price, but I do, I would support a quiet zone, but not if.
I don't think that, I don't know, Jim or someone, but there's a lot of farm use type of trucks that go from, you know, back that way toward town, cattle trucks, certainly any type of islands that we would put in would not work. And honestly, I lived on that golf course for about seven years, and that train came by my house every night and every morning. I don't remember it ever being a bother. Actually, at 10 o'clock at night, it's quite settling to hear that click, and I lived close enough to, to the crossing that I don't ever remember shattering my windows, and I didn't have air conditioning, I kept, I kept the windows open, so it didn't bother me.
You don't have a quiet window.
I can tell you, I put you off over there on the golf course, which is right on the right, and the trains coming through there, even in the early morning, are quite distracting. And I can understand the residents having a problem, I don't know how to do anything about it, I understand the concerns.
Oh, absolutely. And there's no way to, again, and safety is, I understand safety is our primary concern, and I couldn't be sure if we all would agree on that point, but as far as, we've obviously looked at this before, about requesting it to be a quiet zone, perhaps informally or not so directly or indirectly, is there ways we can continue to keep this, look at this or reexamine this every so often or can come back up, or?
I think it's certainly one that, you know, if we, if we take the. I, I think it's certainly one that, you know, if we, if we take the, you know, quiet zone off the table and look at it as just a general safety improvement, you know, road alignment is certainly probably the, about the, the only option. You know, like I said, you know, even setting this quiet zone aside, just a general safety improvement would certainly be a good thing. But it would certainly take a traditional, a tremendous amount of, of financial resources and even staff time too. And where that might fit into a priority list of other things going on, I don't know.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you, Adam. That's a good presentation. On a quiet evening in the wintertime, with no wind, you can actually hear that train whistle in town here. It's kind of a comforting sound, sound to me. As if you're in the railroad. Oh, there's someone else who would like to address council?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm waiting for it to apparently shut down.
I'm the John Casali that was mentioned. And it hasn't been 15 years, it's been five years.
It was while I was on town council, and that's been over 10 years.
It's been five years, I'm gonna give you a little history, a little data tonight if you indulge me. And I'm coming into this cold. I'm here tonight because I was emailed this afternoon by a number of residents who read your agenda and said, "John, can you go speak to this?" So that's why I'm here, I didn't have the benefit of his report. But I'm gonna try to be as objective as I, as I can and give you a little different viewpoint on this. First thing I want to tell you is, you know, working on these problems for 31 years, if you think a train horn is establishing safety, you're very wrong. And you need only look around this county to incidents that have occurred with train horns and people killed because of it. So that's a fallacy. I'm a professor at Virginia Tech, I have been for 31 years, and I live at 385 Emerald Boulevard up in Diamond Point. And for 31 years, I've directed the hearing and acoustics lab over at Virginia Tech. So naturally, I've been involved in vehicle horns, sirens, backup alarms, all types of train horns. Been involved in a lot of litigation on community noise annoyance, hazard litigation and traffic accidents. About 80 contracts on this, maybe 40 cases on it. And that's my perspective, just so you'll know where I'm coming from. Full disclosure here is, I have a personal interest in this because I bought property in Diamond Point in 2008. And the train horn is a disturbance for me and my 80-year-old mother. I run a laboratory that tests many hearing protection devices in the United States. That rating on there is from our lab, in many cases. I'm wearing them to sleep in, over in Diamond Point because of the train horn. I've given them to some residents over there. So even though it's not a problem for you, Mayor, it's a problem for some people. And we need to reckon with that. More importantly, I've been contacted about the train horn by other people besides my own cell. And I've been in town for five years. Some of the residents of neighborhoods that surround Crispin Mill asked me if I could help them get the train horn abated. In almost every case, the question from longstanding residents has been, why did Christiansburg work to establish quiet zones at other crossings, but refused to do anything about Crispin Mill, which affects thousands of residents? We've drawn the circles to show how far out it goes, and we know. Secondly, some asked, is the noise from the train dangerous to our hearing? Or our children's when they are outside? Moreover, as part of my own decision process in buying property over there in Diamond Point, I contacted the town about the train horn. Adam talked to me and informed me that the town's application for a quiet zone at the crossing would soon be filed. That was in July 2008, nearly five years ago. That's my first involvement. He said the railroad review would be based on this whistle van calculator, which I'm familiar with, in that hopes that the town could and should get a townwide ban. For that, the town needs a certain average score or scores of 17,600 at that single crossing. After that, I didn't hear any more from him on the issue, but I would like to stay involved and get updates. About two years later, I wrote town council members in April 2010 about the issue. And several members expressed a strong willingness to deal with this. I retained those emails. Every one I responded, every one I wrote responded except one. Again, nothing happened after that. Then about a year and a half later, in November 2011, I had a long discussion with Mr. Helms. Very productive discussion, I felt, he was helpful to me. And he informed me by letter that after looking at options, the town engineers believed the best chance to obtain a quiet zone at Crispin Mill was to realign the road and by installing some supplemental safety measures that Adam discussed here, of that type. And the two that were specifically mentioned by Mr. Helms were the medians to keep people from driving around and the four quadrant gate systems. Next, in February of 2012, Adam emailed me and asked if I would meet with the railroad engineer about feasible solutions. I said, "Absolutely, I'll meet at any time, I'll cancel my appointments and come whenever you can get them there." I didn't hear anything further about that. I was expecting to meet with him. Now we are almost two years later in April, and it seems that it's gonna be postponed again and put on some plan for maybe looking at on a periodic basis. That does concern me. In the interim, along with a student who was very interested in community noise litigation and community noise issues, asked me to do a thesis in this area. So we've got numerous 24-hour, round-the-clock measurements, blanketing Diamond Point, blanketing Windsor Hills. And I've also made informal traffic, traffic observations down at Crispin's Mill itself. This is a very serious problem, and it should not be relegated to a minimum priority to fix it. Now, if you'll bear with me for just a minute, there's four principles I'd like to convey, and then you can weigh them on your own time. Those four principles are: community noise annoyance, hearing hazard risk, legal principle of equity, and driving hazard. First, I'm not gonna go into details here with all this noise data, because the full report's gonna be 50 pages or so. But we have extensive data, that's most objective sound pressure level meter data, as well as the number of train horn blasts in one night, the 24-hour measurements, and also subjective ratings from residents about the horns. I'll just summarize very briefly. First, the noise levels from the train are quite high from an annoyance standpoint, first principle. I'll say here that even the average noise levels during one blast greatly exceed the instantaneous level set by the county. 57 decibels they waited during the day, 52 decibels during the night. How much more? The short-term horn averages are in the 80s. Now, one might tend to say, well, 30 decibels jumps not that much. It's a logarithmic scale, it's a very compressed scale. 10 decibels to the ear is twice as loud. 20 is quadruple the loudness. So it is annoying. It is hot. If it wasn't, the county wouldn't have set an ordinance of 57 in the day and 52 at night. This is in the 80s. Now, if you look at the peak levels, and that's the peak reached by the blast, it's 110 in certain yards. These are the closer yards, obviously. Please, please keep in mind that the residents' complaints include a lot of things, needing earplugs to sleep, inability to use their yards, and worries about their children's hearing. Second principle, hearing hazard risk. In certain yards in the Diamond Point area, for instance, the horns can produce sounds that are levels known to have potential for inducing hearing loss. More sense, more serious issue than annoyance. That exceeds the OSHA federal industrial limits for short-term exposures. Christiansburg, in my view, is a very responsible town, and I commend you on your work. I know that you don't want hearing hazard risks for your residents, so that's why I just bring this to your attention.
Can you stop right there just, just a moment, we need to change the tape.
Again, there are a lot of children's in yards, they're out there for long periods of time. I'm not talking about the fellows on their lawn mowers, I'm talking about kids playing for hours. And with noise, the exposure risk is not just the level, the levels are quite high over there. It's the duration. Level times duration equal total energy to the ear, and that's what damages your hearing. Federal laws are written that way, by OSHA for industry. Third principle, legal principle of equity. Please don't discount this, I'm not thinking that you would. But the question in some residents' minds is frankly, why would the town allow this train horn and its negative impacts to persist when you've really worked particularly hard to get quiet zones elsewhere? And it's not appropriate, I haven't heard this comment, but it's been repeated to me, so it's hearsay. But it's not appropriate to say that Diamond Point residents have to live with the train horn because they knew it was there when they bought their houses.
I didn't say it quite, I didn't say it quite that way.
Okay.
But they knew the train track was there when they built their houses. But that doesn't mean they have to live with it.
Right, but I don't care who said it. And my point is, it's tantamount to saying that a worker who knowingly accepts a job at a dangerous industrial facility, because they need to work, has to live with those dangers to keep his job. No, OSHA will come in, if reported to, and fix that situation. So the fourth principle, Adam and Mr. Stipes have hit hard on here, and that's the driving hazard. And to me, that's, I'm a noise and hearing guy, but I've done a lot of driving research. And to me, this is the most critical one. These single guards that are here at Crispin's Mill right now are inadequate. Such guards can be circumvented, driven around by an aggressive driver who's willing to simply weave around. I know this firsthand because in 1997, we had a contract with the Federal Highway Administration where we were asked to help set the levels for truckers to get their license, their audiometric requirement, how well did they have to hear. So we looked at a lot of hearing situations, one of which is a truck at a railroad crossing. We looked at a lot of data of accidents at crossings. This is not a well-guarded crossing. It's ripe for a serious accident. Train horns do not prevent such accidents, they're a warning. Engineering controls do prevent accidents. In part because this is such a remote area, it invites a more aggressive driver to circumvent the current guard because they're not likely to be detected by law enforcement. Keep that in mind, please. So I believe the best solution here is, you know, it serves a dual purpose if we can make it work, is to try to first reduce the potential for accidents here. That should be a mission, because these guards are inadequate. And in the process, it will help eliminate the need for the train horn. That's a non-circumventable crossing guard. The best type is the four quadrant gate system. The less expensive type is the system with a high median curve, which makes it tough to drive around unless you're in a very high vehicle. But for various reasons, there are issues associated with that that I think Mr. Helms enumerated. Failing fixing this crossing, I fear that somebody's gonna be killed. I've just seen too much data at other crossings. Now, Randy Wingfield told me by phone today, and as did Mr. Helms in a letter of 2011, that the town didn't have enough funds to acquire the additional right of way to fix the alignment. I'm sensitive to budget issues. You know, I think Mr. Helms in his letter mentioned 100,000, Mr. Wingfield today mentioned up to 400,000. I've heard a half a million tonight. The point is, we don't know. This needs to be nailed down. We need to know how much it is. Is it 100, is it 400, is it a half a million, is it a million? I know and spoke today with a landowner who owns all this land adjacent over here on this side. He's a Diamond Point resident. He's disturbed by the train horn, so that's full disclosure. And his name is Jimmy Radford. I asked him to come tonight, could not attend. But he authorized me to say that he was disturbed by the horn, and he indicated he'd be very willing to work with the town if his property would help in achieving the alignment from that side of the road. It's just something for your consideration. He indicated that no one from the town had ever contacted him about the need for this or the potential expense. If you're doing cost estimates, that would seem to be a prudent thing to do. As I told Mr. Helms in November 2011, my offer and my objective here is very simple, it's just to help. Try to help you solve it. The crossing's driving hazard is the huge issue. The train horn, not problem, is a noise annoyance issue, but in my experience, and this is somewhat rare, it's a hearing hazard risk for people in their yards. Not all the yards, but the closer yards. I'll be glad to meet with the railroad as Mr. Carpanetti requested, that wasn't followed up on. And please hear me, I do not wish to make the pub, to make public the extensive community noise data that we have in this area right now. I have probably 3 million data points on noise in that community. And we do need to put it in a report, but I would prefer that the report be helpful to your cause. There's no reason to make this public otherwise. I only wish to help the town move forward to solve the problem, and I again offer my help in any way you might use me at no charge. But it's been five years since I was first told that the town was dealing with this, and it seems time to try to put it up for our... Now, just a couple of comments about what was said tonight. Why not bring the county into a dialogue? It would seem that would have come very early on. They sharing this, they have a noise ordinance. They have people that are affected on that other side, believe it or not. We've been up that road, and we know how many houses are up there, they're affected. People on out, Crispin's Mill on the other side are affected. One of those people used to be with the Department of Transportation, very high up, and he understands this. Also, if you're gonna do something with a gate, or four gate, quadrant gate, or something else, it would seem that you would propose it to the railroad in great detail and get their assent before going forth. In other words, you know, not do something and then trial and error, see if they're going to accept it. They need a firm assent from them to go forth with this. Show them the plan, I'd be glad to help with that if I can be of any help. So this is my objective tonight, to mainly tell you how bad the noise situation is. I caution you about this, because I've seen the bad side of this type of guard, and to offer my help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And you definitely are an expert in this area, and we, we accept that and respect that. As far as where do we go from here, council? If you want us to continue to pursue this with the railroad, I think that would be a good place to start.
I got, have you presented this to the county, since they are, I mean, you're a county resident, as we all are, but have you brought this to the attention of the county board of supervisors? Since obviously any improvements would have to be on both sides.
Yeah.
Have you done that?
I have not, you know. We have the data in hand now, and again, it's a lot of objective noise data and a lot of subjective resident reaction. But I felt that it was best to put that in a form that's usable to you, because you've been working on this, the county hasn't. And, you know, when it's an opportune time that you think, I'd be glad to talk to the county about the issue.
And I don't wanna speak to council, but I think now's the optimal time to talk to them about it. I mean, you've been talking with us for five years, but, I mean, it's very important since they are a vested owner out there as well. And any funds going into this, we're gonna need their participation in it as well. I, I think it's time for them to become aware and your supervisor or the board of supervisors have input in this. I mean, we can do all this work, and then the county come back, as we've been dealing with the school issue, and say, "Well, it's the way it is, there's nothing we can do," and then we're back at square one.
I understand. Could I ask a question about strategy in that? If there's a plan for realignment and an appropriate gate that's better than the current situation?
I think your presentation that you gave tonight would be perfect for a board of supervisors.
But if I give that, and I'm happy to do that, if it makes sense. But if I give that presentation, the question is, well, what is your... the question is, well, what is your plan for abating the noise problem while at the same time improving the crossing? And how much does that cost on both sides? And the, now Christiansburg itself?
If we can have the prior photo come back up, Mr. Carpan, if you don't mind, the one that's more of the aerial view. I just wanna compare the two sides. And the reason I'm asking now, the county side is what we, it's kinda cut off there, obviously, that's, that's the line there. Is there, is that, is that actually the line right there?
Yes.
So it's, what is that, maybe, what, forty feet past that?
The railroad property line is, is the corporate limits line.
Okay, so, so again, just for argument's sake, Mr. Helms, wait, or Mr. Carpan, if you can show with your hand, is that where it's cut off, is that, is that the line right there? That's it?
Pretty sure it is.
Probably within maybe just a foot or two.
Okay, so...
I'd like to see us at least, as the gentleman has said, if the property owner over to the right as we look at that picture is willing to at least talk to us and work with us, start a dialogue with them. And then maybe do some preliminary studies, and I'm not, I'm not spending a lot of money, but looking at how you would align that so it'd come out there, so you could put the divider in and put the four quadrant crosshairs in and so forth. And, and get a, a number, rather than the swag that we're hearing here, there, and everywhere, get a number that we can talk with. And then you've got something to start talking to, to the county with. And then I think this gentleman is more than willing to help us support our conversation with the county if, if we're looking forward to going.
I guess, I guess my point is, I, I understand what you're saying, some type of strategy on our end, and then get, but I think there has to be some dialogue open to the county board of supervisors, rather than us coming, hey, surprise, we have this, and then a follow-up. There has to be some sort of dialogue between the, the residents of the county who live out in Diamond Point, being one of them.
There's gotta be a buy-in from the county.
To the county. And, I mean, really, you are county residents as well, you pay taxes to the county just like we all do. And it's gonna take their involvement in this. And I'm not saying to put it off, I agree with Jim, we should start something, even include Norfolk and Southern at some point in our preliminaries. But some sort of dialogue has to be open to the county because if history proves anything, in most recent history, we can have the best intentions as council, which we found out at Falling Branch. There's still nothing to be done at a county level.
I, I, I agree with you, but if, if we could go ahead and start working on this, and in the meantime, let the gentleman go out and speak to the county.
Right.
And let them know that we're fully aware of what's going on. There may be some opportunity to do something, but we'd like to talk to them about it.
Well, I think what we would, what, what we would need to do, one, is find out from, whether it be the railroad or a, a review by our engineer or even an independent engineer, is how much land will it take to do what we need to do? Is it gonna be three quarters of an acre, is it gonna be the whole Nagon farm? Well, I mean, we gotta figure out and then have a, have a way to work. And, and some type of a, a, a drawing, whether it be pencil lines to show what we're gonna be doing and an estimated cost. And I think we need, I, I would like to, to see us pursue this to the point of trying to establish that meeting that we talked about with the, with the, with the railroad to just say, hey, this is what, you know, tell us what we need to do as far as, and what you're willing to do to help with this thing. Now, you mentioned the noise ordinance.
Yes.
Of fifty-seven decals and fifty-two decals?
Yes, sir.
Well, now, if...
Of course, of course, it's, you know, certain things are exempt from the noise ordinance.
Train whistles being one of them?
Yes, sir. But I have to give you a benchmark to compare against.
Sure.
And, and the point here is, Montgomery County does have a very solid noise ordinance because it has numbers in it, not to exceed on receiving land. So you're overhearing industrial, and you're making noise, but the guy next door who's in residential, you can't exceed fifty-seven DVA during the day and fifty-two at night. And my point to you was how much more this train horn was, even when you averaged it over its complete blast. That wasn't the peak, that was the average, and it's in the eighties. Uh, so that was just to give you a benchmark. You know, I'm happy to work alongside you with your guidance on the best strategy here. What, what I don't want to do is to go to the county as an individual and say, I can say how bad the situation is on those principles I just went over, that would be my philosophy for doing it. But I think it would have more strength if someone were able to say, there's been some preliminary investigation of what's required in terms of land here, the type of guard that would be the remediation for the current problem. And you put these things together, problem solved. For me, that's a more hard-hitting statement than a professor saying, it's annoying, it's a hearing hazard risk, and there's a principle of equity.
Is there a, an, I guess you would probably know this, or than anyone, is there a approval process or even a, an approximation through, with Norfolk and Southern? Um, if you are looking for a quiet zone or looking to establish a quiet zone, if you can basically do a, and you've kinda hit on this as well, Mr. Salala, Dr. Salala, if certain things are done, do they equate that with a lessing as far as a number amount of what the risk factors are, the risk index, or how do they factor that in? Do we know that?
The, the risk index?
I don't think there's gonna be a pre-approval process, I just don't see them pre-approving anything. I, I think they'd have to see obviously submissions, but if we can just get an approximation so that when we go out to look at different criteria that we can evaluate, or if we're just looking at different proposals, we have an idea. Is that, is that something that we could do, is that something that, that they allow?
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to follow.
No, I'm sorry, do they allow, do they allow proposals to be submitted? And, and basically a, somewhat of a, an opinion?
A four-bar stop would reduce it down to a level that it would be acceptable for a noise fan, but in order to do the...
But you have to do the road?
Yes, the road would have to be improved first.
So right now, we know that there was a four-bar, that would be enough?
I believe that's the case, isn't it?
But we also know that cost, now, we don't have, you said a hundred, two hundred thousand, that's a big gap.
Right.
Do we know, can we narrow down what that cost would be? With the subsequent road impro, with the, the pre-road improvements and, I mean, can we look at that as a, just a, I like to have a number, an approximation, and then so, so...
I think they're gonna have to look at how much of the straight area and how much land they'll need, and what the cost that's gonna be and everything before they can come up with it.
And I'd like to know too, and this is why I kept asking about that line, is the Crispin Mill, is it, is it completely horseshoe-shaped? Or is it actually straight on the county side?
It comes up in a less of a scheme, as it starts to go uphill, too.
So the remediation necessary on one side is not, as far as the road movement?
As you come into the county side, it continues to go to the right.
Okay, so we actually, the county would not be looking to incur the same type of expense as the town would as far as remediating their property, correct?
No, but they'll be looking at an expense, and that's why I threw the challenge out there for you to introduce it to them. I mean, as you can see, you, you've issued a challenge to us, and there is a response here on how we wanna look into it. But there has to be a challenge on the county side because they are responsible, their side. The town is not gonna pick up any cost that the county will have to do on their side of the improvement. They're, they're a different entity, as we're finding out every day, every day, every day, when we try to work with them on certain things. So we can do as much work as we want, you can, you can estimate that, no, it should be less. But I would, I would warn you not to estimate anything, Brad, you tell me if I'm wrong, because there could be, their costs could be a lot more than ours, or equal to ours.
And I'll be honest, I, I couldn't care less about the county's cost on that, I, I just...
No, but in order to get a quiet zone, or even increase safety, we need to...
I, I understand, but the reason I wanted to see that map right there is the cost they're gonna incur could in no way, it would pale in comparison to what the cost the town's gonna incur. We've got more than simply a four-bar.
That's what you're estimating. That's what you're estimating.
I think all four gates would be at our expense because the railroad right-of-way is within town limits. And they'll put their gates on their right-of-way.
How about the road leading into it?
The road leading into it would be different, but all, I'm pretty sure all four gates would be in the town, be at our expense.
Probably no more than half of the barrier would be in county, on the county side as you're talking about.
But it is gonna, still won't take cooperation and, and expended by the county.
But we need to go ahead and get some numbers that we can talk about.
Tangibly, yes.
Yeah, the tangible numbers before we really can do much else.
On that, that I guess would be the, what's, where it says that has the, the state route, and it has the Crispin Mill, and the Crispin, there's three on that side, other side, uh, there. That is all in town limits, correct?
Yes.
So again, any movement of the road, we're incurred regardless, if that is not county-involved.
The road, the road improvements are gonna be mostly in the town, probably ninety percent of the town. I can tell you to look at it right now, that's where it's gonna be.
This is the gentleman that's made the...
Jimmy Rad, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Radford.
I don't think Mr. Radford has ever stepped forward to make an offer like that before, even being opposed to the, to the train whistle. I'd like to know from Mr. Radford, what is he willing to do? Is he willing to give up a, a goodly portion of that area down near the tracks so that we can straighten the road? It's gonna have to swerve over into his property to make it parallel with, for the gates to be parallel with the tracks.
Yes, sir.
I'd, I'd like to know that.
Well, he's only owning land less than about two years.
Oh, okay.
Correct. And his home was one of the sites where we actually did set up dosimeters, twenty-four-hour dosimeters, took measurements. And I've had lengthy conversations, he, he isn't, I don't like to speak for other people, and I asked him to come. He's on a construction job and he can't come to see me. And I said, what can I say that's appropriate? I've said that already. Uh, he, this is bottom land down in here, and he said, I'm willing to work with the town in any way possible to get the alignment. He understands that, he's, he's in construction. And he said, you know, the train horn is a definite nuisance. I, I also just will intimate this, I, I've never run into this in my career, and I've been doing this for thirty-one years, and I've appeared in front of a lot of boards and a lot of juries. Residents are a bit afraid to come here and speak about this train horn for two reasons. One, are the comments about, you bought your house, you knew it was there. But more importantly, there's some perception, and maybe this is the old history you all mentioned from fifteen years ago or something. I wasn't around here at that time. But they felt when the issue was brought up, the train horns got more frequent, and were blown for longer periods of time.
You're right, and I had heard that from the landowners out there, that when the railroad said we cannot refrain from blowing the whistle, that for the next several days afterward, they laid on that horn pretty hard.
And, and the only reason I'm telling you this, I, I wasn't gonna mention, but Mr. Showalter asked me about going to the county and, you know, other residents need to be involved and so on. Many people contacted me when I moved in the neighborhood about the train horn because they had known that I'd gotten involved in dog kennels and other things. Some things I didn't wanna be involved. But they don't want to come and talk about this. So we're not gonna have a line of people up to the podium. Now, I'm willing to go to the county and do the best I can, but I, I would hope that we do at least some preliminary planning work like Mr. Van Hoosier mentioned, to at least allow me to say or point in parallel with me that the town is, has taken this very seriously and is actually getting some estimates about what's required. And we have a willing landowner and so on. I just feel that's a stronger case for the objective here. But I'll do what you want me to do.
Is it possible to, to Adam, at some point within the near future, to talk to the railroad engineer and his group to get a, a lack of, a swag as to what he thinks the railroad would be willing to do and accept to do this?
The railroad usually responds formally to a, they respond to a proposal.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's been my experience.
But I mean, we could make fifteen hundred proposals and spend thirteen years...
I think it's a reasonable request, and I would support getting our arms around what is, what is, you know, what is a workable solution there.
We'd always seem to have a... Because of the poor with the railroad, I thought.
Adam tried several times to get them to come up and meet, uh, but they would never come up. That's, that's why I never got back with you because he couldn't get them to come up here.
They have folks in Roanoke, but this is an engineering thing, a decision that will be made in Atlanta, it will not be made in Roanoke, it'll be made in Atlanta. And I, I support going, doing, doing our homework, so to speak, and figuring out what the impacts are gonna be in costs, and quantifying things, and tying that down. And then the next step would be, I don't know that the railroad, you know, railroad would know that we're, that there's a serious interest in doing it too.
Well, I, I think we've gotta go...
Deal in hypotheticals.
I think we've gotta go ahead, like you say, and do our homework and get something done. And then probably discuss it next with the county before we go to the railroad and get there. But let me ask you another question. Who did the design work for the Cambry Crossing? Is that the railroad or?
No, our engineers did. No, the reason we did all the work to Cambry Crossing, we're hoping to get that one low enough, the rating there low enough that we could include Crispin Mill also. And plus, it was already a quiet zone, it's been a quiet zone for a long time.
The, the reason I brought that up is that they already have experience in taking a look at that. And we could utilize that experience in trying to come up with some rough numbers there of what, not only rough numbers, but what's it gonna take physically in land to accomplish it?
Right, right, it's, yeah.
And similar to what we're working on, I would say Mr. Radford would have to be contacted. But even, I know it's hearsay, but...
Yeah, you gotta contact them.
We're not gonna go on his property until we have something signed.
And if the cost, if the cost of the land, if, if he, you know, if he sort of makes some stone soup down there, you have some donated right-of-way,
Yep.
and the county participates, then, you know, it starts to become more tangible.
Yeah.
And I think what councilman Showalter, what I was hearing was, the seeds need to be planted with the county.
That's, that's all meant by it, I didn't mean that you go to them, then come back to us.
I understand not wanna go, just wait.
I think we still need to pursue this, but like Brad said, seeds need to be planted at a county level to your board of supervisors. That there, there is an issue, and that they are vested in this as well.
Well, if we are, if we're looking to open up this dialogue, then why don't we just formally open up the dialogue? Why don't we send a letter from the town to the county saying, this is what we're looking at, this is the situation? Let's see if we can get a response from them.
We don't have anything meaningful to talk about.
We have nothing meaningful to talk about, all we're telling them is that we are currently looking into the Crispin Mill Road Crossing, and that pursuant to the, whether the county line is drawn, it's gonna create cooperation. Would I have to open up a dialogue with them concerning that point? Very simple.
If the county brought it to us, I, I think coming from a citizen, even if it's one representing many, to me, when, for instance, with you showing up here tonight, your emails, that means more to me as a councilman than getting a letter from the county saying, hey, we want your participation.
I think in the letter that we send though, we said, we also mentioned the fact that we've had a presentation done to us by our resident who's well, well versed in the area, and that our understanding is that he'll be meeting with, it will be proposed. He is basically proposing the, or presenting the same information to the county in the weeks or days or months or whatever ahead. And that way, what you're asking for, basically for us to break the ice with them so you don't show up one day and say, hey, by the way, I live here, and this is the situation in Crispin Mill. Uh, by the way, my name is John Salala. I mean, they already have an understanding, or at least this, this thought, that you're gonna be coming before them. And it's an icebreaker. I don't know, I, again, right now, we have nothing in our tangible to present to them.
It's up to staff and council whether we wanna send a letter as an icebreaker, or send Barry over to talk to them, but still it would take, it'd take you going there and introducing yourself and your issue to the board of supervisors.
We'll be leading, the liaison meeting will take place first week in, in May, and that might be a good time to break the ice.
That'd be great.
But I'd like to see us... If I, if I could just, I mean, I know, we, we finished our public comment, but if I could just say this. I, I would appreciate the icebreaker. I'm, I'm definitely willing to go. Every, they've seen me before on noise issues that I've been hired to represent folks about. So they, they know that's my area. But my presentation to them would not necessarily be about the solution. It would be about, you have a public nuisance, you have a hearing hazard risk, and you have a potential driving risk out here with a circumventable gate. And that would be the essence of it. Do you, do you agree with that?
I just think bringing it to them, presenting it to them, I mean, we have to break into the ice.
Being made available for their questions probably is almost, probably the most important thing if they're gonna have quite a few like we would.
I mean, it's, it's basically you put it on their plate. So when we, we break the ice and then we bring them some soft figures, or at least mention that in the next liaison meeting down the road, they're not totally surprised, what, what are you talking about? You know, we haven't heard anything of this.
I'd, I'd also like to know what Mr. Radford's, be more specific. He's expressed his interest in working with the town, well, if working with the town means selling land at a hundred dollars a square foot... if working with the town means selling land at a hundred dollars a square foot, that's not, you know, that's gonna bump, you know, and I, I use my stone soup metaphor very loosely to say, if, you know, you get several people to work on, you know, with an interest in this and a stake and an obvious, because, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, when you're comparing that to replace, you know, to replacing playground equipment or uh, replacing the floor at the rec center, you know, you start saying, you know, we have to answer the tough questions about how do we spend our money. And so it becomes more doable or more, uh, realistic if we're, uh, one of the piece of the pie rather than the whole pie.
Well, and the way I look at it, in all due respect, Mr. Casali, we can have all the figures in the world, but if Mr. Radford's not willing to accommodate, then this is a moot point because we can't, we're precluded from what we can do there. But if he is willing to, to help us out, we need to know what it is because that in my opinion is step, that's square one.
Well, I think accommodations two things cost.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody be willing to work with you if they want.
Which is wild.
We need to.
Supply and demand.
Let me do this.
Supply and we got the demand.
Let me make a motion that we authorize Mr. Helms to start the action to look at this, see what would be involved
Yeah.
to correct the situation with that crossing and to contact Mr. Radford or whomever else he needs to, to see what they're willing to do to facilitate. And bring that back to us with the objective of giving us not maybe an absolute cost number, but a, a ballpark number that's pretty good, that we can, we can start talking about. Because it's gonna take some really in-depth engineering to get to the point to have a concrete number, but he can come up with a good approximation of it.
And I don't think you're talking about a lot of land.
Yeah.
I don't think, I think you're talking about.
And that's my motion. That'd be a good street committee approach.
I don't know what we need to do. We just need to instruct, uh, Mr. Helms to do it.
Well, can we do that?
Yeah, we can instruct Mr. Helms to do it.
And, and I'd like the icebreaker to occur at the liaison meeting. I'm sure you will, Mayor.
We'll do that.
Sure.
And I'm not saying, sure, you, you have to go to the county, but I'm just, I would encourage it to just introduce it to them.
Before or after this icebreaker?
The icebreaker should be at the end of the, early May.
Should be within two weeks.
First man's two weeks.
First Wednesday.
First Monday.
Let's.
And I would anticipate it would be.
Will you let me know when that hap- happens a lot? And then plan to go speak to the county? Could somebody let me know?
That meeting's already scheduled, is it, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, it's, it's, oh, yeah, that's.
What, what date is that?
It's about the tenth of May.
May first?
I missed it. Second Wednesday.
The question I would have Barry is, how much time does the town need to give us that snapshot?
It'll probably take six weeks to, six to eight weeks.
Can we say two months, two months from today that we'll have some sort of cost analysis and?
Yeah, that's depending on how available Mr. Radford is and.
There's still a lot we can do. I mean, I can imagine Mr. Radford from the hearsay would, would not call the town and invite some sort of conversation.
Well, you're gonna, honestly, my impression is he would've come tonight, would've stated his intentions. I stated to you what I felt comfortable from my conversation with him. I think he, he lives right up from there. He's effective tremendously. So he is interested and motivated.
He plans on building a house on that piece of property and, up on top of the hills, what he's told us.
Yeah.
Plans on staying there.
Michelle, can we get this added to our master list with the two month delay?
So there'll be follow-up.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. All right, Mr. Helms, you have your instructions.
Feel free to, uh, draft anybody out of your staff into this thing that you need to.
Okay. Let me ask, is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? If not, then we'll move on to, uh, item number three and that's discussion by council. And this is the intention to amend section twenty-nine dash four, tampering with water and sewer system prohibited. Article three in general of chapter twenty-nine, that's the water and sewers of the Christiansburg Town Code. Now, you've been brought up to date on what some of the problems are. But we need to take action on an effective date for this ordinance. Mr. Helms, what is your recommendation on the effective date?
The, um, first of the month, first of May.
To give proper time to notify whomever's involved? I guess it's just a.
Really just a.
A newspaper read or a type of, some type of public notification, part of the old.
If somebody's parked on a meter, we'll give them a notice and if they refuse to move their car, then on that notice it'll say, we can have your car removed. So it really doesn't need.
Okay.
It's, it's a very seldom event that happens, but when it does happen, it's a real nuisance.
It's about two weeks until May first.
I move we make this effective May first.
Second. Motion in a second to make the tampering with the water and sewer system effective May first. There's a second.
Yes, sir, a second.
All right, any discussion? If not, since this is an ordinance, Ms. Plark, will you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barbara.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
And that's a five zero vote. The motion carries. You should have in your packet, three resolutions. Resolution and recognition of Christiansburg High School wrestling team for their twelfth consecutive state championship. And then there are two resolutions to recognize and honor two Christiansburg High School students to our consecutive state winners in the Virginia High School League diving. One leader, I believe it is, named Terry. And these are brother and sister, the Pamontic children. And we'll need to take action on approving these resolutions.
I move we approve all three. I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the three resolutions. There are some corrections in those. Uh, after I wrote them, I realized I had some misspellings. There's also four certificates that will be issued with the resolutions and that is to the four individual wrestlers who were named individual state champions in their weight class. So, if you will let me include that in the motion as well.
And one thing I wanna mention, Mr. Mayor, I know we have a motion to approve and I'll tell you in a second. Um, the two in regards to the diving are fantastic, all three are fantastic. The last of those regards to the, um, wrestling, Mr. Showalter team. Like to, uh, I'm wondering, um, the one thing else that this, this, we produced this past year is we produced an all-world representative from Christiansburg. That was, that went off to the Dashles and then represented that weight class at the World Championships, which is over in Asia, if I recall. I don't think that, that, he's one of what, fourteen? He has a one thirteen that went. Um, but it's, I think we may even want to include that, whereas the rest, it is one individual world representative. Uh, and then one person in that weight class in the, in the country.
I'm not aware.
And we have one, in fact, which is ranked number one as weight class.
In, in conversation, Mr. Hall, I think that would, I think what we would do, would do here is just have a fourth resolution.
Okay.
Because the three that we have here are for team, you know, team competition. And I think we have in the past recognized some individuals for All-American
Yeah.
uh, status, I believe the Graves lady.
We, we did that one?
Yeah, we did. We recognized, uh, Carmen Graves and she's just been named ODAC athlete of the year again.
Why don't we go ahead and take action with these three and then let Mr. Hall, someone provide you the information for this image Lizley's talking about, so we can do that?
Cause, uh, cause he's in, he's in college, correct?
No.
He's in high school.
Ronnie is a sophomore in high school.
Wow. The world, oh, world, Joey Dance.
He's graduating this year.
Yeah, he's still in high school right now.
He's still in high school right now.
What's his name?
Joey Dance.
He will be recognized one of the four.
Yes. Oh, yeah, he's been a four time.
And we can, uh, we can add that into the stip if you'd like, by naming him a world-class wrestler.
Absolutely. I mean, he, it, that's, that may not happen again for thirty, forty years.
Work, I need to include that in?
I think you can write right into this resolution that he, for him, it could just be a differentiated resolution.
Yeah, we can do that.
Unless you wanna have.
Are you saying, I, I don't care. I, I, I'm just.
I, I just think a compromise like that should go, should not go on.
Yeah. We didn't have a resolution for the Roanoke College Track Team. We just had a resolution for our, our citizen that was an All-American.
These are a lot of fun. I'll tell you, they are, and I think it's good to recognize them, but they're not easy to write. And, uh.
You do a great job, Mayor.
Well, thank you for that.
And I'll be, I, I, is it in Kevin? I, I always thought his last name, was it Dresser or is it Dressler?
Dresser.
See, I always thought it was Dresser, D-R-E-S-S-E-R, so that, right there.
Dresser, dresser, tomato, tomato.
Tomato.
Rasslin'.
Rasslin', wrestling.
I wanted to go back and give a little credit to the early track coaches since, I mean, wrestling coaches. Cause wrestling is not that new to, uh, Christiansburg High School, started in the seventies and they had some excellent coaches. They never won any state championships, but they had some exceptional wrestlers. So, uh, if you would like for me to add into the, the resolution recognizing Joey Dance as a world-class wrestler, that you need to tell me what.
I, I could actually get that to you within, by tomorrow with the actual, if there's a title that was given.
Email it to me.
My motion to, to approve up to four resolutions, depending on whether we did or not.
All right.
And then we'll go back one file.
Get to the mayor, Intercontinental or World League or.
I'll get, I, I, I don't know that.
WWF.
Email me that information and we'll make it part of the resolution. All right, motion in a second. Discussion's over. All in favor of the resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and I'll make the corrections. Town managers report.
No.
Vote on.
What do we got?
Moose Lodge.
Oh, the Moose. That's right. That's why John Neal is here. That's item number three, the amendment to take action on the uh, rezoning of the property of the Royal Order of Moose.
I'll make a motion that we set the planning commission's recommendation, which included three proppers.
Second.
Well, we don't have a recommendation from them, but we've got their minutes saying that. He's got a problem, do you? Then, uh, Mr. Helms, read the res- read the recommendation.
President, Christiansburg Planning Commission acting on a rezoner request by the Royal Order of Moose Incorporated for property one fifteen Farmview Road Northwest from I-two General Industrial to B-three General Business has found filing a duly advertised public hearing that the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices permit changing the zoning of the property. Therefore, be it resolved, Christiansburg Planning Commission recommends that Christiansburg County Council rezone the property at one fifteen Farmview Road Northwest from I-two General Industrial to B-three General Business with proppers date this eighth day of April, twenty thirteen, with nine voting yes, one abstaining and one absent.
How move can we accept the planning commission's recommendation?
Sir.
Sir. Motion in a second, discussion. Ms. Plark, if you will poll council on this proposal to amend the zoning of the property.
Councilman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
And that's five oh. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, Mr. Town Manager.
I'm passing around the picture of the new street sleeper which we have on site. It should be on the road in the next few weeks.
That was the guy with the whispering.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to set the public hearing for the water and sewer, uh, and garbage rate increases for May the seventh.
So move. Second. May have motions, may second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Thank you.
No, you said it should be the council.
He said seventh, then you, Mayor.
I thought he said second.
Seven, he said seven.
Seventh.
It's, it is seven.
Seventh, okay. I still vote a.
Each of you have received, uh, copies of comp plan. Uh, two chapters of comp plan and draft forms. If you have any comments, you please forward them back to myself or Kylie in the planning department. She'll incorporate those if, um, if she can. We're doing this chapter by chapter and that way you won't look at the whole comp plan when it comes in for approval. The schedule for two thousand thirteen policy committee meetings at, uh, BML will be held on Thursday, July twenty-fifth at the Greater Richmond Convention Center. I think I forwarded your emails on that, but if not, I'll get them to you.
And whatever committee you are on this year, if you want to attend and go to that committee meeting, that's the one you need to go to. I haven't sent them an up-to-date, uh, committee list because I haven't heard from all of you, so if I haven't heard from you, you'll be on the same committee on some occasion.
Uh, each of you should have a town section meetings, uh, sign-up sheet and agenda at your place. If you want to go, please let me have the, um, sheet back, sign-up sheet back so we can get the check for the thirteen dollars for the lunch paid and.
We recommended a Pulaski meeting on the twenty-third, as I told you.
That's the twenty-third and if you want to attend, let us know by May thirteenth and that gives us ten days to get a check cut for lunch.
You can attend to any of them, but that's the closest one. Okay, we, we see the phase one environmental site assessment back on the Wilson property. There was nothing uh, unusual about it. There's underground stories tank for fuel at the house and, uh, an equipment shed or two. There's some spots where tractors leaked and stuff like that, but there's nothing exciting in the report, so, that, that's good. So we're proceeding with, we've gotten the survey now and we're proceeding with, uh, getting closer to closing. And that's all, that's right.
Okay, our work session is scheduled for April twenty-third and that's gonna be at six P M. by your request.
Mayor, I have a question about that. It's not the date, but is it, considering how many people, how many citizens showed up for our first work session and I'm sure we probably will have several, um, come in, but, um, can't, is there any way we can have it in the room where we typically have committee meetings and things like that? It still has space for people to sit. And I'm just saying it as a change of venue, that's it.
It's a little more intimate in there.
Right.
When we sit across from each other.
If, if that's your desire, yeah, we can do it in there.
If, if, if we do have a lot of citizens show up, definitely we can move back in here, but.
Yeah, we can do that, if that's your desire. And anyway, just a remind you, reminder, that is April twenty-third at six o'clock. Okay, anything else?
The, uh, we talked last time about, I think it was for I want street, about, uh, it was a question that a citizen had brought up to me.
Put a, put a work orient to get a, stop, I don't know, speed on the sign, put there.
All right, on May first, May fourth, uh, Dr. Dan Hurd is inviting all Christiansburg Town employees to drop by for a cancer screening test or examination. And that's in, in line with, uh, Skin Cancer Awareness Week, which is the first week in May. And you see, I'm wearing a patch here. Uh, that's Dr. Hurd's work and I had a precancerous uh, place removed last week. place removed last week.
What is that again, Mayor?
And that's going to be on May 4th. And all you have to do is just drop by his office, you don't have to have an appointment. And his clinic is located.
That is on a Saturday, is that right?
Yes, it's on a Saturday, and he'll have his office open all day, and he's going to have several doctors there to assist, and I think it's, it's a very noble thing.
Where's his office at?
His office is on Price's Fork Road. I don't know the exact.
National Bank of Blacksburg.
Yes, Sheffield Drive, I think it is, just off Price's Fork Road. And he's doing that in appreciation for town employee service, and it includes fire, fire department as well as the emergency services, the rescue and police.
I'm going to do that, that's a great offer.
Thanks for bringing that up, too.
Since I've gone through that in the last couple of weeks, I think that's important. Anything else?
One last thing I want to bring up, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like for us to look as a community, and through the guidance of Mr. Hams, into next year, being a part of Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's April, I had a chance this past week to speak to representatives in Pulaski about the role that GLs play in preventing child abuse, you know, once there is an abuse situation, how we assist the child family going forward. I don't know if we play an active role right now, if we have anything to do with that, but I'd like to, opportunity maybe to give some things to Mr. Hams, see if next year we want to participate in some way. It may be a banner, maybe some.
Yeah, if you can get that information to us, we can prepare a proclamation making that month, Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Right.
We just did one last week, you may have read in the paper, where we recognize volunteers.
Yes.
And I like to do those when we get requests for them, and we'll continue, but do that and we'll.
We had a representative from, actually, we had the head of NRB Cares, the Kim Murphy as well, who's, I think we all know as a council. And in addition, NRBCS had many, many people there, and of course, the courses, we had representatives from Christiansburg or from the government county, I should say, from our courthouse, but it might be something we'd want to look into going forward, if it's at the leisure of being a council.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Hubbard is not here, otherwise we would have something else on the show. Steve, Steve is not well tonight, and he called and said.
Well, he did want me to pass not.
I like the peace.